Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the Whitehall City Council meeting of May 18th, 2021. Would anybody please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Conneson.
Present.
Cantor. Heck. President Potter.
Present.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to excuse the absent member.
Second. Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Elmore, to excuse the absent member. Any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The absent member has been excused. Next, we have our approval of minutes for the May 4th, 2021 Agenda and regular meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Ms. Conneson, second by Mr. Rodriguez, for the approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. This brings us to our first poll public of this evening, and we do have one item that's been filed in council office, and Ms. Alden, would you please read that to the record?
Carolyn McIntosh, 143 to 4, Whitehall, Ohio. Resident of Whitehall since 1995. Council members and residents, I am writing to object to any additional fines, taxes, or duties on the residents of Whitehall for the purpose of repairing, updating waste and water infrastructure. Those have been major issues since I moved to Whitehall until the EPA signed in Whitehall with violations in 2008 for the severe issues of sanitary sewer overflow, meaning fecal matter was overflowing on the streets and ground where residents live, work, play, and attend school. When I have raised this issue to pass, the Director of Development and Public Service often becomes upset and adds extraneous commentary regarding all the grants he's gotten for Whitehall. I want to state now, this is decidedly and categorically about income tax levying for infrastructure repairs, not grants. In 2010, Whitehall urged us to pass an additional half percent income tax for a broader fix across the city to address sewage and water overflow rather than let the city of Columbus add a fee to our water bills to address the fecal overflow and flooding issues. We passed the income tax hike and started paying an additional half percent in 2010. From an editorial in the Columbus Dispatch, March of 2020, Kim Magard states, "The city has received about $7 million from 2011 to 2019, approximately $9 million through 2021", from the tax increase, saying, "What is clear is that income tax revenue is playing a vital role in Whitehall's comeback story and nothing about its original purpose to repair the infrastructure." As I read through updates from the city, I see $70,000 for water and $50,500 for sewer, but I can't find another $8 million who told us we were paying for water and sewer upgrades. Now you want us to pay again through a fee assessed to our water bills, the very assessment you told us we could avoid by agreeing to raise our own income tax. We have paid enough and continue to pay. I would happily pay the fee to Columbus in exchange for an income tax reduction. I am sure many residents would agree. In fact, I think we should ask that.
Thank you. Well, now, we want to stand to commit reports. Administration, Financial Management.
President Potter, I'd like to respond.
Yes, Mayor.
When that income tax was passed in 2010, on the ballot language, it gave a variety of things that the income tax would pay for. Many of, I believe it was general fund purposes for the operation of the city, as well as water and sewer improvements, and as well as recreation facilities. We, I was one that went around to many people and explained what the income tax would pay for. We had, at that time, we thought we may be able to possibly have a recreational facility at the old Armory and a splash pad there. However, due to asbestos, we could not safely put it there. So, the income tax went for general operations, and it went for water and sewer improvements, which the city has paid 2.5 million of that income tax collected, and also went for recreational purposes as well, and we have kept our promise to the citizens. So, I would encourage everyone to go back and read that language that they voted on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything further? So, we'll have to go to standing committee reports. Administration, Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Open to Administration, Financial Management. It's 7:06. We have a number of items to be introduced tonight, and we met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30, and I think it's still right here.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met on Tuesday. We have no drafts or pending legislations. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards Enforcement met last Tuesday. We have now two items coming forward, and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have no drafts or pending legislation.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Conneson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again probably around 6:40 on Tuesday.
Very good. Thank you. And Parks and Recreation, I'll call Ms. Conneson again.
I'd be happy to do that one as well. Parks and Recreation also met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll probably meet around 6:45.
Let me make a note.
Yes.
6:45, okay. Thank you. Official reports, Mayor Maynor.
Yes, I would like to say with the governor's orders or health orders being rescinded as of yesterday, the city will have new procedures ready and willing, ready to go out tomorrow regarding city hall safety measures, as well as what people can expect from the rescension of those health orders, and we'll have that information out to the public and out to our staff tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, Michael Bivens.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. On the microphone, this microphone, your earphone right over there if you want it. As long as it works, can you hear me? Okay. Good evening. I just wanted to make an announcement, especially piggybacking on what the mayor said as it related to the CDC guidelines. The city attorney's office, as we know, is now located down the street at the Eagle Wellness Center, and so what we are anticipating doing sometime in July, and we want to invite and get everybody and let all the public know, we would like to do an open house, a real formal one, invite you out to the city attorney's office, see what it looks like. We could have it out in the parking lot, since it's going to be summer months sometime in July. You can go in to see what the city attorney's office looks like, and it will be a great time at all. So, I will get more details as they come along, but I wanted to at least let members of council know, as well as the public know, that that's on our radar. Secondarily, many of you know how much I love being a city attorney, how much I love being an attorney, how much I love inspiring my staff, inspiring the public, inspiring my office to be a force of social change. One of the main things that I love doing and I love seeing is when I'm able to influence my staff. That being said, one of my staff members, Kristen Lippers, has applied and has been accepted into two prestigious law schools, one of which is Capital Law School, the other one is Dayton Law School. Unfortunately, we will lose her in the city attorney's office. So, if you talk to Kristen, congratulate her, I'm so proud of her, I'm so proud of what she's going to become, as well as what she is going to do as far as trailblazing in the legal field. That being said, we are posting a paralegal position. It should go up hopefully by the end of the week. We're going to take our time, hopefully bring somebody in, and then they can be trained by Kristen, by Julie, so there will be no loss of service to the citizens of Whitehall. So, I just wanted to let the members of council know, as well as the public, that that's happening. Thank you.
Good for her.
Thank you, Mr. Bivens. Auditor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to be here.
It's good to see you in person and not in a little box.
I'm glad to be here. I have no official report other than what you have, that would be all you.
Thank you. Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report. I do want to piggyback a little bit on what the mayor said, just to set a couple things straight. The mayor is correct when we asked voters to increase the income tax nearly or a little over a decade ago. One of the things that we talked about at that time was a percentage of that increase would go towards funding compliance with Ohio EPA mandates, and that has materialized as a 15-year, $3.5 million project that we are in the middle of. And the purpose of that 15-year project is to reduce the amount of infiltration and inflow, I mean, into our sanitary system, so reducing the amount of rainwater and storm water that goes into that system. At no time did we talk to residents about that income tax being used to replace aging water distribution lines or replacing sanitary lines. This, what we, what Megan and I presented last week is a completely different topic, and we are asking for that surcharge to fund those necessary repairs. But again, I think that there's some misconception as to what the surcharge would be used for, what legally it could be used for, and what the increase that we asked residents for in 2010, what we said that that would be used for. At no time did we say that it would be used to replace water lines that are 50 to 70 years old. So again, I just wanted to make sure we cleared up those misconceptions, because I don't want people to continue to think that this is us coming back for an additional bite of the apple or to fix a problem we already said we would. The water line replacement, replacing water mains in Whitehall will have no impact on sanitary or storm sewer. Those two are, those are three different systems, and one's an out and one's an in. So, we're talking about replacing water mains throughout the city so that residents can continue to have safe, clean drinking water. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Public Service, Ben Greer. Greer, are you with us this evening? I'll take that as a no. And Treasurer Quinsel, are you with us this evening?
I'll take that as a no.
The following official reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting, and those would include the Honors expense report for April 2021, the Honors bank report for April 2021, the Honors statement of cash position report for April 2021, the Honors revenue report for April 2021, the City Attorney's resident report for April 2021, and the mayor's report to council for April 2021. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have one item, and that would be the minutes for the April 8th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Alden, could you please call roll on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Thank you. Under Third Reading, we have got no legislation this evening for consideration in the Third Reading, which brings us to Second Reading. Orders 37, 2021, authorizing and approving general fund expense account number 100.200.51,003.51, titled seasonal intern and making appropriation in the amount of $7,840 from unappropriate monies in the general fund 101 to 100.200.51,003.51, seasonal intern and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 37, 2021, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Mr. Bailey has introduced ordinance 37, 2021, seconded by Ms. Conneson, requesting suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Conneson. Any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 37, 2021 has been adopted. Ordinance 39, 2021 will be read by title only, and will be a public hearing being held on June 1st, 2021, and that's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified origins of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c)(1) to allow a drive-through window and/or drive-through facility on the property located at 3596 to 3648 East Main Street, parcel 090-000-548, property owned by Whitehall Retail Ventures Limited. And again, that's title only. Also being read by title only this evening, also at the public hearing on June 1st, is ordinance 40, 2021, which is amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified origins of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c)(1) to allow a drive-through window and/or drive-through facility on property located at 890 South Hamilton Road, parcel 090-000-52, property owned by Great Eastern Owner Limited. Next, we have Resolution 10, 2021, which will also be read by title only this evening, approving a resolution of and by the city of Whitehall condemning intimidation and violence, reaffirming equality under law, and committing to reviving civility between all people. That now brings us to our first readings. Ordinance 43, 2021 will be read by title only tonight, making a fund transfer in the amount of $25,880.36 to bond retirement account 101-950-57,500, the debt service fund 401, and declaring an emergency. We now have ordinance 44, 2021, making and approving a subsequent appropriation of $7,500 from unappropriability in the general fund 101 to the farmer's market expense account
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 44, 2021, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Heck, to introduce ordinance 44, 2021, to suspend all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Heck. Any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 44, 2021 has been adopted. Ordinance 45, 2021, approving and making a fund transfer from unappropriate monies to the general fund 101 in the amount of $23,000 to the unaccured benefit reserve expense account 505.300.51,000, and approving a subsequent appropriation in the amount of $23,000.00 from the accured benefit reserve fund 505, the accured benefit reserve expense account 505.000.51,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 45, 2021, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Mr. Bailey has introduced ordinance 45, 2021, seconded by Ms. Conneson, with the request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Conneson. Any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 45, 2021 has been adopted. That brings us to ordinance 46, 2021, which we read by title only, and is being referred to the Planning Commission for their meeting on June 3rd, 2021, and it reads, "Amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified origins of the city of Whitehall and is subsequently amended, changing the zoning on property located at 34, 3540 East Main Street and 739 and 721 Maplewood Avenue, parcel numbers 090-002-122, 090-001-890, 090-003-640, 090-001-900, 090-002-485, 090-003-638, and 090-008-240, from R3 Residential District and General Commerce District, GCD, to A2 Apartment District, property owned by MAMA Company Incorporated. Again, that's by title only. We're now up to ordinance 47, 2021, approving and making a subsequent appropriation in the amount of $699.12 from unappropriate monies in the general fund 101, the credit card fees expense account 101.950.59,620, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 47, 2021, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Morrison, have introduced ordinance 47, 2021, and asking for suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 47, 2021 has been adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Oh.
Oh, we already did it?
We did. We adopted. We can adopt it again.
Just making sure, sir.
Good call. Ordinance 48, 2021 will be read by title only, and this will also be referred to the Planning Commission for their meeting on June 3rd, 2021. Amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified origins of the city of Whitehall and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.06(c)(7) to allow an apartment dwelling structure containing more than 12 dwelling units on the property located at 3540 East Main Street and 739 and 721 Maplewood Avenue, parcel numbers 090-002-122, 090-001-890, 090-003-640, 090-001-900, 090-002-485, 090-003-638, and 090-008-240, property owned by MAMA Company Incorporated. Again, that's by title only. Our final piece of legislation this evening is Resolution 13, 2021, resolving to approve then and now certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 13, 2021, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Conneson, has introduced Resolution 13, 2021, and asked for suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
This was the logical reading? Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes, that's what.
Is tonight the third reading? Are we, we're on the second reading?
Oh, this is as soon as we're done. I think I interrupted our thought pattern. I thought we was on Resolution 13.
We are on Resolution 13.
Okay. That's a then and now, which is normally.
Yeah, but now it's going.
First reading.
Okay. So, yeah, we're.
Yeah, so I think.
Never mind, I was thinking about another one. I'm sorry.
Okay. No worries. Appreciate that. Okay, so the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Conneson. Any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Conneson.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Resolution 13, 2021 has been adopted. That now brings us to our second poll public of the evening, and we have no additional documents filed in the council office since our last meeting. Now, I'll open it up to our community date board, if anybody's got anything they'd like to share.
Well, tomorrow, Wednesday, you can sign up for the Link Us, the East to West Corridor, and give resident participation of what's going to happen when they do the East to West Corridor, Transit Corridor, so they are working on that. They've been working on it for a while. So, they are asking residents in Whitehall, because it's going to affect Whitehall, actually all throughout, you know, throughout the east and west. So, that would be great if people could sign up and do that. That's tomorrow noon, and the other is at 6:00.
I believe it's on the city's website.
Yeah, on Facebook page, uh, Facebook page to, uh, sign up for that.
Is that, when is it that Paul Throw is going to be westbound opening starting? Is that a day and a month?
That, no, that is, uh, Monday.
Okay. So, it's the name, the date on that than the 20?
23rd?
23rd.
1/24.
So, starting the 23rd then, Paul Throw at West Front.
Right.
Thank you.
The high school's having graduation this weekend.
I saw the banners up on, down Main Street earlier. It looked very nice.
They look good.
Yep. That's pretty exciting.
And we're having a parade. Uh, July 3rd, Saturday, July 3rd, uh, we are going to be having a parade for independence. And, uh, the theme is looking forward because we're all looking forward to something.
I think that's very apt.
Come on to the calendars.
Thank you. Anything else from community debate board? At this time, we'll poll council. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to thank everyone for watching and be safe through the week.
Thank you. Councilman Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like to thank everybody for watching. Thank you guys for coming. It's good to see you and I'm excited for things to start getting back to normal. I am actually looking forward to it.
Absolutely. Uh, here's something I haven't said in many, many months. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, I've related to that birthday of Joanna.
Thank you.
Last Friday. Um, if you guys will be with me for about two minutes, um, I may have to take a break too, so I apologize.
Take your time.
But, uh, maybe my mind and body will become weaker, but God is my source, sourceless strength from Psalm 70 through 26. Mayor, Attorney Bivens, Director Woodruff, Attorney, uh, Auditor Miller, Mr. President, members of council, Julie and Susan's of Whitehall, I would like to take a moment to thank you for your prayers and support during my illness. Since testing positive and being admitted to Mount Carmel East on January 22nd, I was in a hospital, a physical rehab facility, back in the hospital, then in a progressive rehab facility for a total of 84 days before getting home on April 15th. I was intubated in an induced coma, relooking. After taking a turn for the worse, it was told they almost lost me at one point. After that, I was in a side stroke on three occasions, was unable to speak for several days, lost about 70 pounds, and was so weak I could not even raise my hands off the bed. As I lay there gaining amount of strength and physical strength, I knew the only reason I was alive was because of the outpouring of love and prayers by so many of you. In the Alice Walker novel and subsequent movie, The Color Purple, one of my favorite lines is from Missy Lee, shows her courage and resilience with the line, "I'm poor, I'm black, I might even be out there, but dear God, I'm here, I'm here." That line kept me going. I'm not sure as to why I lived while so many others died during invasion, but dear God, I'm here. A special thank to Mayor, Tom, Karen, Lori, Joanna, Wes, Larry, Bob and Julie for your messages and encouragement. Wes, although you're not here, thank you for the winter visit and for the jelly beans. We just finished those three days. So, sorry for getting a little emotional there, but I do want to thank everyone again and, uh, heart, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, thank you for being such an inspiration and, and knowing you speak follows here, we're just so thrilled to have you back and I'm really recovering. Ms. Elmore, good luck topping that.
Just, wow.
Sure, not bad.
No. Okay. Uh, want to thank everybody for your participation. Want to congratulate Kristen, uh, that bit from the attorney's office, her acceptance to Dayton and, uh, Capital Law School. Also want to, uh, last week on May 12th, Whitehall actually rugby attended, uh, the Whitehall Yearning High School award ceremony, recognized this year's recipient of the club's $2,000 scholarship and congratulations to Edison Bechel on her achievement.